Order a city council meeting scheduled for April twenty fourth. We have a roll call, Ms. Adams.
Mayor Clea McCaw.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Humphrey.
Present.
Councilmember William Benning.
Present.
Councilmember Faye Jackson. Not yet.
Not yet.
Councilmember David Jones.
There.
Councilmember Angelica Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Rodriguez.
Present.
Mister Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you ma'am. We'll have our invocation by Councilman Rodriguez and after the invocation is completed, we have a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Landry. Please stand.
Please pray to your God as I prayed in mine. Lord, we ask you there to be with us here today and as always, guide our local decision-making hands and hearts. We know we cannot help everyone or make everyone happy, but help us always keep an open mind and open ears as we work to do what we feel is best for our community. Please heal those that may currently sick and wrap your arms around those who may be struggling mentally. Thank you for getting us all here safely and may we all get home safely afterwards as well. Also, we ask that you watch over Councilman Benning as he continues his next journey after leaving council. In all this, we pray your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to item number one. Mayor Pro Tem Humphrey.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move that the agenda for the regular city council meeting of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five be approved.
Second. Then properly move the second of these discussion items. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Hearing none. It's passed. Tonight, we have some awards. We're calling Chief Heiser up for the proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. April Sexual Assault Awareness Month really should be something that should be recognized and made aware of all the time, not just one month. But the theme for Sexual Assault Awareness Month this year is "Together We Act, United We Change." And I really think that expression captures what we do here in our community to address sexual assault, and that's develop partnerships. Sierra Vista Police Department cannot just do this alone. We investigate sexual assaults. We actually do a lot of preventive work as well and awareness. We work very closely with a lot of nonprofits in our community such as Lori's Place, B and L Skills Builders, Lana Tompkins, who also served as a volunteer victim advocate for the Sierra Vista Police Department for many years, taking those callouts after hours so that victims also have that care after the incident. So this is something that we really value. The partnerships are going to continue to grow. And I ask everybody just think hard about sexual assault and if you know somebody who's vulnerable, to help them. And we always want to raise awareness to this. Sierra Vista Police Department, we're dedicated to doing the best quality investigations. We send our detectives to advanced training, some of the best training in the nation on sexual assault investigations. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Our proclamation reads as such: "Whereas sexual violence and harassment are dehumanizing forms of abuse that harms our communities and has a profound impact on health, opportunities, and well-being such as physical and mental health implications, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, challenges at work or at school, lowest self-esteem, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, and suicide. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over half of women and one in three men have experienced sexual violence involving physical contact during their lifetime. And one in three women and about one in nine men experience sexual harassment in a public place. And whereas, according to the Arizona Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence, that eighty to eighty-five percent of survivors of sexual violence reported that the person who caused their harm was known to them. And whereas, together we act, united we change. Through prevention, education, awareness, and strong continuum of victim services and holding perpetrators responsible for their actions, individual agencies, organizations, and communities can work together to prevent sexual assault and support victims and survivors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Clea McCaw, Mayor of Sierra Vista, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of April, twenty twenty five, to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month and in for the city of Sierra Vista. In witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Sierra Vista to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five, in the independence of the United States, two hundred and forty-eight. Clea McCaw, Mayor." Our next proclamation is International Astronomy Day. And I'll read it first. So proclamation reads as such: "Whereas, Sierra Vista, Arizona, is known as the center for astronomy and city, and the city residents appreciate the beautiful night skies of southern Arizona. And whereas, Sierra Vista is the home of the Wachukka Astronomy Club of southern Arizona. And whereas, the University South Foundation owns and operates the Patterson Observatory, the only public astronomical observatory in Cochise County. And whereas, International Astronomy Day offers the opportunity for astronomers to share their knowledge and passion about the study of astronomy. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Clea McCaw, Mayor of Sierra Vista, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May the third, twenty twenty five, as International Astronomy Day and in for the city of Sierra Vista. In witness wherefore, whereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Sierra Vista to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five, in the independence of the United States, two hundred and forty-eight. Clea McCaw, Mayor."
Yes, please get a picture. We hope that you will all come out. May third, we will be at Tompkins Park with the library, and we will be there from three until eight in the evening. We'll have lots of activities for people to learn about the sky, learn what we can see on the sun, and then we will be getting into dusk. If you want to venture a little bit further, we will be at Carchner Caverns on Saturday. We will be there from nine till noon. The Astronomy Club is a very active, outgoing group of people with a wide range of experience, from those people who are interested in astronomy to those people who are professionals in astronomy. We welcome everyone to participate and be involved, and it's a great organization with a wonderful group of people. And I thank some of the members for taking the time to come here and be here today. So thank you all.
We're going to take this opportunity to recognize a outgoing councilman. Mister Benning, would you please come forth?
I got my mayor shoes on.
Those are sweet.
You guys match.
Don't get their faces.
Yeah, don't get the faces.
Just the shoes. Your side would be broke. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to William Benning, Councilman William Benning, for your service to the city of Sierra Vista as a city council member, January two thousand and nineteen through April, twenty twenty five. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you of all that you've done. Learned so much from you, especially when I started to run my election. So thank you for all the counsel you have given the council as well as me. And we also want to present you with a key to the city. We change the locks.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm not going to say much. I'm going to say it at the end, but I do have to do one thing. Everyone on the dice knows the hours we put in, and we don't do it alone. We always have a significant other beside us, next to us, sits at the table as we're networking and talking to everybody that wants to talk to us. So I have to thank my beautiful bride for being that person by my side. I'll say more at the end. I'll save y'all. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And we'll go to our city manager report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of the council. Your next work session is scheduled for Tuesday, May sixth, three P M. here in the council chambers, and I'm sure our budget discussions will continue at that meeting. And then, of course, your next regularly scheduled council meeting is for Thursday, the eighth of May, five P M., also here in the council chambers. A few projects to talk about tonight, and most of them involve tearing up streets and stuff, so we'll let you know what's going on. The sewer line repair that has closed Frye Boulevard at the ninety ninety-two intersection is almost complete and just in time for A.D.O.C. to come through and do their paving, and we should see that in that area next week as well. So at long last, all of that is being done. Of course, right after that will be the M.L.K. reconstruction from Avenue de Esquela to State Route ninety, which was awarded to K and G, and that project should start up pretty quickly after this wraps up at ninety ninety-two. And then we'll get that started, and hopefully that'll be done by the end of the fiscal year. The North Garden Avenue Streetscape Project was also awarded to K and G, and that is scheduled to begin in mid-May and will be completed hopefully by December of this year. And finally, our annual street maintenance will be occurring various places all over town, also awarded to K and G, and that work will commence in mid-April. It's already started and should be completed by the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. And finally, on behalf of the staff, I want to thank Councilman Benning for his service to the community. It's truly been a pleasure working for you and really do appreciate you. And watch out for those Kansas Twisters and Wichita. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any questions for city manager? All right, we'll proceed on. Item number two, Councilman Benning.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move that the consent agenda consisting of the work session meeting minutes of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five and the regular meeting minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five be approved.
And properly move the second of these discussion items. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. We go to our new business. And Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move that Resolution two zero two five dash zero three one, fiscal year twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven, strategic plan framework be approved.
Second. And properly move the second. Staff report, Mr. Robo. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of council. This is your resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven strategic plan, which would run from July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. This would be the tenth strategic plan that council has adopted since two thousand and seven. It establishes twenty-two different priorities under four focus areas. Should you approve this plan tonight, the next steps would be to take the plan and assign various key staff to accomplish those actions over the next two years. And then you would receive updates every six months at your work sessions. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, comments? Everybody ready for the vote? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. And now we have our call to the public. We have three calls to the publics tonight. For those calls to the publics, you have five minutes to speak. You'll see a green light here. When your red light is illuminated, your time has expired. And we call first is Miss Patterson. Good noon, ma'am. Right here. I'm sorry. Right here. And speaking to the mic. You can probably move that up.
Yeah, you can raise it.
Is that good? Oh, like, okay, that's good. Yeah. I know I'm tall, but not that. Alrighty. So greetings, everyone. I just want to say I come in peace. I wrote down my notes so I can remember. Greetings, I come in peace. Please let me know that I'm not here to bring any hurt, harm, or danger to any one person or place. I am known as what we call a state national, and I'm not bound to any commercial entity, and my name is Belonnie Lee Patterson. My reasons here today are to create and bring attention to the city council members, clergies, and United States of America Republic and citizens of the free world. We understand that the residents of Sierra Vista have, some have expressed our deep concerns about the current state of rental housing prices in our community. Recent trends have demonstrated an alarming rise of unfair and burdensome housing practices that negatively impact tenants, including but not limited to excessive rent increases. Many tenants face frequent and unjustified rent hikes, often far beyond the limits of affordability. Two, predatory leasing practices. Lack of transparency in lease agreements and policies puts tenants at a disadvantage, leaving them vulnerable to hidden terms and exploitative conditions. Three, unnecessary late fees. Exuberant and disproportionate late fees penalize tenants who may already be struggling financially, meaning that they're on, you know, a fixed income, social security, or maybe even military benefits. Corporate exploitation. Large corporations managing rental properties are often observed engaging in rent gouging and leveraging their power against local citizens. We believe that housing is a fundamental human need and that these practices disparately harm hardworking Arizona residents, particularly Sierra Vista residents. It is imperative that steps are taken to ensure fairness and transparency and accountability in our local housing market. Our request are implementation of policies to regulate and limit unjustified rent increases, yearly rent increases. Two, establishment of clear, comprehensive, and transparent leasing terms prioritize tenant rights. Three, reduction of gapping of late fees to reasonable and justifiable levels. Four, increased oversight and accountability for corporate landlords operating in Sierra Vista to prevent exploitive practices. And five, meet with the financial auditors or order a forensic audit to see over the funds and how our tax dollars are being spent. I have recently created a survey for the Sierra Vista tenants to sign, and I will deal with that next week when I come back from D.C. because I will be going there, attending there to address some other concerns. But at the end of the day, I really do believe that we should support the bill of the A Z S B fifteen eighty-seven that will help tenants from unfair rent increases. And that is my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And next, we have Mister Dimitri Simon-Tentin. Hello, sir.
Mister Mayor, council, city staff. I come today offering a certificate of appreciation to Councilman William Benning on behalf of the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Sierra Vista. We just want to thank Councilman Benning for his leadership, his vision, and his dedication to the community. And then as our council liaison, just the support over the years and guidance and, of course, come on, Will. All right. You know, that's the more formal capacity, but also I just want to say it's been a pleasure knowing you. I was excited to help you on your campaign, your first campaign. And then, you know, it was a privilege watching all the things that you did with the movies in the park, working with Tim, and everything that you've done with the Miss Sierra Vista pageant and so many other things. And I truly want to thank you for your guidance, your wisdom, and then just your friendship over the years. And I'm glad that you're going to Kansas. I'm happy for you, but I'm sad for our community because we're losing an asset in the jewel. So just thank you. And on behalf of the I D A board.
Congrats again, sir. And our final call to public is Miss Marta Mesmer. Ma'am?
No, it's fine. Thank you, Council Mayor. I just wanted to come today and wish William the best. And thank you. It was an honor and a privilege to work with you. And thank you for all your service to the city of Sierra Vista.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we will end our call to the public, and now we have council comments and requests of the council. We start off with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Want to thank all the people that came and talked to the council of the public. It's always important to us to hear. Lot congratulatory remarks for you, Mister Benning. Good luck to all those going to win a prom this Saturday. Please be safe and make sure you have made the proper arrangements ahead of time if you're taking pictures at the golf course. Make sure you get that sorted out with the team there at Public Soul. You're going to take those great pictures at that beautiful place. The, it's good to see the SR ninety project is all the way to Industry Drive.
Yes, it is.
It is there. It's almost about to meet the other project we have, so I hope that is done this week.
They're going to come together.
If not, we're going to get real creative with the, but it needs to happen, so I'm glad to see that happening. It's really, really good to see. I'm thankful for that construction. I'm thankful for the delays. I'm okay with all that, so I'm glad to see it happening. The Boys and Girls Club has their end of season flag football games this weekend. They have an award ceremony on this weekend, and their championship games are the twenty-sixth at one and two P M. over at Keith Hampton Field. So want to see some awesome flag football games? Go check them out. Thank you for putting out the astronomy day information. I was just there the other day for an event, and I still hear people tell me that they don't know we have a planetarium in Sierra Vista. So if you don't know, please check it out. They have, they put their information out on social media. They normally have a monthly open to the public event. It is an amazing, amazing setup they have. A lot of local astronomers bring their own setups too, and they let you look at their equipment too, so check it out. And then finally, just my farewell to Council Benning. Thanks for your service to our city as well as our country. We serve together. My battle buddy in the Army. Our medical call volumes are definitely going down by three at least with you leaving in your absence. And we're also, we're going to call a locksmith to change the lock to the city after you got the key. And then, you know, all those that are trying to fill his shoes, you have a short window, probably May first, it looks like, so to apply for appointment, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Landry.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So I'm not a football watcher, so I have like a few pages of comments that I was going to share tonight.
Not tonight.
I'm joking. I don't have a lot of comments. But I did want to share that the Good Neighbor Alliance, they're looking for people to come and help cook for their guests. They'll have a lot of different openings available, so if you have, I encourage you to reach out and do it again, maybe a little more often. If you haven't, I encourage you to reach out and give it a try. And you can always go there and they can give you a tour of their facilities. It's really nice. And I feel like if you go there and you do cook for their guests and spend time with them, I feel like you'll want to keep doing that. So if you haven't, then go ahead and do that for sure. And then I wanted to also say farewell to Councilman Benning. It's going to be really weird because the whole time I've been up here, I've always, he's always sat next to me, and I've always heard these wide range of comments. And that was always really good. And the one thing about him is he's always a very welcoming person. When I first was running for council, he talked to me and he was very encouraging. And whenever there's people that are here in the audience, he's always, he always goes out and he welcomes people and makes them feel welcome. So that is one thing that I really admire about him is being very welcome and outgoing and just larger than life. And so it is sad to have different changes going on, but you know, family comes first, and so I wish him all the best in the future. And then I also want to say, be blessed, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Joe?
The Environmental Stewardship Commission is still needing people. So if anybody is interested in serving on that commission, I would hope that they would go to the city website and fill out the application for membership of the commission. The commission does a lot of work in terms of clean water, fresh air, recycling, those kinds of things. So right now, at the end of this month, it'll be down to two people, which means they won't have a quorum. They will still be able to conduct work sessions, but until we get at least one more person, they won't be able to bring anything forward to the city council. So if anybody out there is interested in those kinds of things, I would hope that they would apply. Also, Councilman Benning, thank you for your service in the Army. My dad was a twenty-three-year veteran of the Army. Why I wanted to, why he called me Davy Jones, I have no idea, but I wish you calm seas and fair winds in your upcoming endeavors.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Jackson on the line? They're having difficulties with it. Someone said that the streaming wasn't working either, so. Oh, okay. Councilman Benning?
All right, thank you, Mister Mayor. I was good until people started talking and doing things. I wrote a really long list and I crumpled it up because I started thinking this person, that person, this person. I'm like, if I don't think this person, I know, if I don't think this person, they'll get mad, etc. So I'm just winging this like I always do. Staff, we can't do nothing up here without y'all. From two thousand and thirteen, when I had my first sit-down with this is how our department's run, this is what we do. You have embraced me, taught me, put up with me since two thousand and thirteen, so I really appreciate that. Like Dimitri said, he helped me on my first campaign. We lost, but one of the things I did do is promise the community I'd run again, and I did. And I thank the community for rewarding me, but back to staff, it's just amazing to work with such great people that put the city first, the community first, and do everything they can for the city. In the Army, you receiving a coin from your commander or from another unit or higher means the world to soldiers and the world to anyone that served in the Army. I don't know about the other services. I wasn't in those. Go Army, beat Navy. Chief, both chiefs, I thank y'all. I'll treasure these. They'll sit on my mantle. And I'm very blessed to receive them and blessed to work with y'all. Every time I think of our fire department and our police department, I think of a few good men. Where Debbie Moore says, they stand on a post and say, nothing's going to happen to you tonight, not on my watch. And that's what you and your, and your, and your men and women do, so thank you so much. I'm trying to avoid all y'all. Victoria, thank you. You're the spearhead. You keep Chuck out of trouble, I think, but thank you. It's great seeing you moving up from Parks and Rec to where you are now. I can't talk about Laura. I will cry. Chuck, real quick, and I'm sorry it's taking long. I'm trying to be quick. I came and saw Chuck in about two thousand and twelve, I think it was, and requested to sit down with him and meet him in his office. I was just some bum on the street doing projects for the city. And I asked him for advice. I asked him, I told him I wanted to get into local government, whether it was working for the city or just in the local government. He gave me a lot of, a lot of, I said, good pointers, but I ended up running for city council, so I don't know. But since then, I want to appreciate you just letting me walk in off the street. And as I've come to know you more and more and watch you manage and watch you manage your staff and work with the community, that's just who you are. You'll open your door for anyone, and I appreciate that from the beginning up until, you know, whenever we say goodbye, but to me, that was amazing, and I thank you for that. Now, the inevitable for all the council members I worked with before, Rachel Gray, Craig Mount, Christina Wolf, Gwen Calhoun. Now the inevitable for all the council members I worked with before, Rachel Gray, Craig Mount, Christina Wolf, Gwen Calhoun, the Honorable Rick Mueller, rest in peace, sir. We didn't see eye to eye. But the one thing we did share was our love and passion for the City of Sierra Vista. He would truly be missed to this day. Now the people on council, this is the hard part. Carolyn, I love you to death. We spent a long campaign times together, first, second. And I'm glad I got to share this journey with you. We've grown, changed, and moved on in our lives in three sixty's. So I appreciate doing that right with you. You're, you're making a great mayor pro temp. And, and couldn't be proud of you and I look forward to seeing what else you do in your future. My right seat right here, strong side. When, when Angelica first came on council, she was, I don't want to say shy, she was timid. She didn't really express her voice as much. And boy, when she got her voice, it was amazing. And the stuff that she does and the heart that she has and the commitment she has to the city is unparalleled. And it's been an honor sitting next to you, really. And when we switch, I started in that seat. I'm finally here. After the night, you'll be here and forget about me. Mark, I, I, I couldn't be proud of it, have you on the council. If you remember, we were looking for, we did the same thing that's gonna happen now, and we were looking for, to appoint a council member. And Mark called me up and said, William, are they gonna be fair in who they select? And I said, hell, yeah, apply. And, and brother, it's good to serve with you on the dais, great to serve with you in the Army. You know, you can choose your family, you can choose friends, you can't choose your battle buddy, so I, I always remember, always appreciate you. To Councilman Jones and, 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 and Jackson, I wish I had a lot to move, to work with y'all. I know we talked profusely while you're running and I got to work with your wife, so that counts for something. But y'all, already starting off with a bang and, and as I told, K gun nine this morning. The council set up for success. And a lot of this has to do with, let me back up real quick. To the young lady in the audience who also applied and was selected, it was great sitting next to you too. You made every meeting amazing, everything we did amazing. It's because of Marta Messmer, we started doing a lot more. Meet the council, come see the council, talk with the council in public. And while you're not on the dais anymore, you did bring a lot to it and very appreciative. Now I go to my friend, my pastor, my mayor. It's been fun. Served with you. Served within the contract side of the house and now getting to serve with you on the dais. I remember when you reached out to me and said, William, I'm gonna run for mayor. And I said, what the hell are you thinking? But from that moment, I mean, you were, you were, you were the deep, you did what you have to do, walking on Wednesdays, which you keep, which you're keeping up. And that means more than doing it during the campaign. You're everywhere you need to be, saying and doing the right things. The one thing I'm very impressed about you is you're the true meaning of partisan. You, you're, you're at every event, no matter what side of the aisle people work on, no matter what side of aisle anybody's on or what their expressions are, opinions are. You're you, you're true to yourself, and you care about this community, and, and that's a blessing. Parks and Rec, Belinda, I can't look up right now because I will cry. No. Way back when, we talked about bringing baseball and NBA, and, and the Major League Baseball to the community. And I was a young pup, two thousand thirteen, thinking I was gonna be a city council member. And I met this great lady and it was amazing. So thank you. Thanks, Wes Hewitt. Katie Preble, who's one of our new members. Oh, I'm gonna miss names. Wes Hewitt, if I didn't say him. Jessica Conkle. And who am I missing? Shoemaker, yes. They, they've been holding down Parks and Rec since I've been here, along with this amazing lady to my left, Laura Wilson, who I've known forever. She's my, she's my Park and Rec sister. And she does bring the fun to everything, so thank you so much. That's my way to bring in there. To the most important people, the community, everyone who's in attendance, and the thousands that are watching on YouTube. That's why I serve. The community is my heart. I will miss, I've, I've never lived in one place longer than I've lived in Sierra Vista. And Sierra Vista embraced me. I raised my family here. They graduated from Buena. And that's the hardest part is leaving the community, so I thank all of y'all and be blessed. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry it took a little long.
Oh, no problem, sir. No problem.
I didn't cry. Oh, I'm sorry. My partner in crime.
Did not forget her.
Yeah, bless her. Greg Johnson, he, he's not with us no more. Not against you, Councilman Jones. When you look over there and, and he's not with us, it's, it's, it's hard to see, but I know he's in a better place. And as grouchy as he was sometimes and set on his ways, I miss having coffee with him. I miss talking to him. I miss sharing what's going on in the city with him. Just miss him. But he, he did one of the most impossible things. He lost his election when me and Carolyn won and was a little bit bitter and ran with signings. He ran not on the ballot, so write-in and won a city council seat as a write-in, which is almost impossible, but you're, you're surely missed, young man. And I appreciate all the guidance and all the talking we did and, and thank you. That's all I can say. Thanks for letting me go back to that.
Oh, no problem, sir. Mayor Pro Temp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, when I, when I think of, I was trying to think of all my favorite memories with William over the last six-plus years. Actually, more than that because you count the campaign leading up to the first time we were elected. And Greg inevitably is in most of those memories because we just, the three of us didn't know what we were doing. And I did, we found out what's the earliest date we could place signs, like the night before, and like the sun went down. And I think we all got into your truck.
In the truck at midnight.
And just drove around for hours. And we might have put up like over two hundred signs between the three of us campaigning. And it was so fun. And we had so much fun. And I remember bringing Greg home and it was like really late at night. And Suzanne being like, don't keep him out so late. He's really old. I'm sorry. But yeah, he is missed. And, and I all, I have so many memories like that with you and him and they make me smile or laugh. And most of them are from the campaign, like, you know, because when we're working, we're, we're working. But you did always, you were kind of like a comic relief at times on this dais and like much needed sometimes, yeah. But it's hard to sum up the six years of service, well, more than that, of service and collaboration and camaraderie and just a few words. So, but I tried to write them down. And over time on this council, you've been solution-focused and you stuck to your promise of being physically responsible. And, and you've been a true champion for Parks and Rec. We've been fortunate to see so many projects come to fruition while we're on council. And just during these last years, your steady presence and thoughtful input has played a key role in, in those things, in all of that making progress. And then you've brought something that council truly needs is that, that humor, that, that funny side of it. But working alongside you, I've grown to respect you and your perspective and your approach. And sometimes you'll start making a point and I'm just like, where is he going with this? And, and then without fail, you'll, you'll land on an idea that's, comes across kind of, it's smart and it's often outside the box, mainly because you don't acknowledge that there is a box. You just don't even see that box. And it's, it's been, in many cases, it's helped us make better decisions. And you're, and I've told lots of people in here, you're like a brother to me and not like a brother I never asked for or wanted. But I'm definitely going to miss you. I'm gonna miss working with you. And I'm sad to see you step away. And, but I know the new path that you and Christie are taking are, it's gonna be an exciting one. And I have no, no doubt you'll continue making a difference in Kansas and definitely in your grandbaby's life. And I just wanted to thank you for all your service and, and your insight, your humor, and your friendship.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Man, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a road from when we first, first met back. Wow, that's been a while. Matter of fact, while he was running his first, his first go-around, I think his first go-around, I kind of got, I never told you this, I kind of got in trouble putting my signs at a nonprofit organization. Your signs that, yeah, I got in trouble for that. But you won. No, no, you won that one. You won that one. And this man, when he had his Corvette, he was telling me all about Corvettes. And he, he, he actually encouraged me to get one. When I bought it, then he sold his. All right, dude. I see the way this, this friendship is going. But, man, you've been a friend. You've been a friend of the family, a friend of the church. Came down many a times and just spoke words of encouragement to, to the body. And just thank you for what you, what you've done, what you've done for the city. You are a true friend, a true brother. And we just, we just love you to life. And man, just keep doing what you're doing. And he's the only one that has seen the inside of the new ambulance.
The chief even gave me an ambulance coin.
But we thank God that, that Chief was here and the great medical team that he has and the staff that have came to Vista did you, put you back on the road to recovery. So, man, we, we appreciate you. We love you to life.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
With that, we are dismissed.